Well, hello, welcome to the show. I'm Joe Hyde, publisher of San Angelo Live. And I'm with John Berrio and he is running for city council for one of these S and Bs up north.
Single member district two.
Single member district two, and you're in a field of three people. So it's a very contested race. And this is Tom Thompson's former seat, is that right?
He currently holds the seat.
Or it will be Tom Thompson's former seat because he has to resign it to run, right?
He can't run again because of term limits.
Right.
So he is elected to remain on council if he can and is running for mayor.
So if Tom Thompson, well, if Tom Thompson doesn't make mayor, then he's out of public service.
He is off the city council.
Yes.
There are still lots of possibilities. We have over 20 boards.
We'll put them on Coast of D.C.
It's a possibility.
So how has Tom Thompson done as far, I mean, he's there for two terms. Has he done a pretty good job?
He has participated with the council on the path that the council has elected to go.
Okay.
And you open up a grand door for me there, Joe. One of the premises of my candidacy is that in my many years on the Costa D.C. board, the airport board, keep St. Angelo beautiful board, as well as other city-related activities, I have inside understanding of what the city charter says our city should operate like, what a section in the code of ordinances says the city council should perform as, as well as having reviewed the city council code of ethics and the oath of office, which I've taken for each of those board positions. Essentially, San Angelo is a city council manager form of government under Texas law. It's the way we're chartered. We have been operating.
Now, I would argue with that. We're not Houston.
Correct.
Which Houston's a mayor, a mayor managed city. We are really a city, you know, you said city manager, didn't you?
I did.
I'm sorry. I thought you said city council. Yeah, we're a city manager.
City council, city manager form of government.
The only city that we have where the mayor is elected and paid a salary to run it like a city manager would is Houston.
Correct.
And so we are just like every other city in Texas, except for Houston, where we have to hire a city manager.
Yes.
And the city manager is, becomes the most powerful man in town.
That's the way we're chartered.
That's right.
And the way it should be in their case. In our case, we're quite different. We frequently see in our city council meetings, individuals on the council speaking directly to the department directors within the city. There's actually an ordinance that says that's a no-no. All instruction is supposed to be given to the city manager. The city manager is supposed to be presenting each topic to the council. We very seldom see our current city manager address the council. He can introduce any of his directors or anyone else to make a presentation, but it's really a meeting between the council and the city manager. And feel free to read the city charter on that or chapter 1.02 of the city ordinances.
I've covered city council since 2013, the city council. And it has always been that if it's a finance issue, you're going to bring up Tina Dierski or whoever's the head of finance. If it's a city events, you're going to bring up, you know, Sid Walker. They bring up these people as subject matter experts, not necessar, I don't know if they're actually going to direct them to do something that would be in conflict with what the city manager wants them to do. I mean, wouldn't you say that there's kind of like a tacit approval going on there between the city manager? He brings up his people to make the presentation about, you know, moving this budget item over here, right?
Yes.
He's doing, Tina Dierski is doing that because Daniel Valenzuela, the city manager, told her to make this presentation to move this money. Wouldn't you agree?
That is the way it works currently. Is it appropriate by the city charter and the ordinances? No.
So a city, so if you had, if John Berrio had his way, would the city council be able to hear from subject matter experts, the heads of departments, for example?
Absolutely, we have to. But the direct communication cannot skip an echelon in the chain of command. You're a military man. You understand that.
So you're saying from the days, a city council person would have to ask the city manager to ask the subject matter expert a question?
No, there can be questioning, interaction to learn more, but when it comes down to directives, the directive is to the city manager to accomplish a task.
So do you have an example issue where a directive was given from a member of city council directly to a department head, not through the city manager?
The list is long.
Well, just give an example.
Anytime you hear the council, and particularly Mayor Gunter, say, "I want such and such," the simple response must be, "Where is the decision by the seven-member council?" Okay, because we also get into that. It's a council manager form of government. It's not any one member of the council, not the mayor, not any one of the six representatives, to speak directly as to an "I want."
Okay.
There must be a vote of the council.
Is there an issue that caused, is there a problem that was caused by this, by that workflow?
Well, you mentioned how many years you've been watching the council. And you implied that it's always been this way. Just because it's always been wrong, doesn't make it right.
Okay, but has there been an issue where the taxpayers were ill-served because you had a directive from, let's say, Mayor Gunter or even Mayor Morrison to someone, to a staff member, not through the city manager?
Okay. The means, though the end result may have been in our best interest. If it wasn't accomplished in a way that is specifically in compliance with what the voters put in way back in 1946, when they approved the city charter, that was by the voters. It authorized the existence of the city.
I understand what you're saying, but my thought is if, let's just hypothetically say, Mayor Gunner tells Tina Dierski, the finance director, to do this, "I want this done." If the city manager didn't want that done, he's sitting up there on the dais too. He can say, "No, Tina, let's step back and let's bring, let's present it to the council again at the next meeting." I've heard that a lot. Not necessarily from that, you know, the people interacting, but I've heard him say, if there, if a decision he disagreed with was being touted from an elected official on the dais, he would say, "Let's bring this back next meeting," or "Let's bring this back in two meetings." I've heard that a lot over the years. And of course, he's been the only city manager I've watched in San Angelo, but I've seen that a lot. I mean, he, he doesn't, he's not direct to the point of saying, "No, we're not going to do that."
So what you're telling me and what you're telling the public
Right.
is that we have a city manager that cows to the voice of a single council member without there being a vote of the seven?
Well, he is, he is, if someone tells him to make a decision, tells a department head to make a decision, or sorry, if a member of the council tells the department head to do something and he disagrees with it, then usually what he does, he tries to get it tabled.
Okay, that's exactly the flaw in what's happening now. A single council member cannot tell Daniel Valenzuela or any of his subordinates what to do. They can suggest that the board vote on it.
But are we talking semantics there?
No, sir, not at all.
When Mayor Gunner tells someone she wants something done, I like to, like I've seen her do things like, like sales tax, our sales tax revenue was greater than expected, so we have extra money available. So I've seen this. She will go through her list of what she wants, you know, that money to spend and wanted to spend that money on, and she'll just say, "These are my, my suggestions." She's not really saying these are my suggestions because she's not that way, right? She's, she's very direct and to the point, but anyone can override her on the council, but they don't do anything. They just sit there and they, and no one says anything, which in this case, that happened in like 2017 or 2018. No one said anything to disagree with her. So it was tacit approval, "Hey, put these things together and let's talk about it next, next meeting." That's basically what she said. These are things I'd like to spend money on.
Once again, Joe, I'll refer you to the city charter and the city ordinances governing the conduct of the council.
But aren't you, but aren't you arguing, you're arguing style over your.
No, not style. I'm arguing law.
No, her style is that. That's, that's what her style.
Okay, then let's just say that she's breaking the law.
And, and they're not voting on, saying, "I'm going to vote to do this right now." Because obviously it's not on the agenda, right, to spend the money on those particular things. There might've been an agenda item to talk about our surplus in sales tax revenue.
Okay.
And, and, and so she, in the discussion, she says, "Hey, I'd like to, you know, fix the roof at Fort Concho. I'd like to do this, do that, the other thing." And that's not necessarily a directive, but it sounds like it is because she's a very direct person.
It's what you call passive aggressive behavior.
Okay.
Okay, that being said, they can vote on numerous items, numerous subparts in developing a plan to move forward on a single agenda item.
Right.
Let's approve this component, that component, that component. Now let's get down to the package. So long as the caption in the agenda on that item states it is an action item. If it is only a discussion, they are not allowed to issue instructions passively or directly. They are not allowed to take any vote. It's how the, the agenda item is captioned.
Right.
And that's the Texas open meetings law.
And a lot of times when they break that, you'll have the city attorney step in.
As should be.
And you can't do that.
Correct.
That's, I've seen that a million times. So I mean, I don't think they're out there actively breaking the law. I mean, we're talking.
More often than not, they break the law out of ignorance.
Okay.
Okay, now ignorance by its official definition is knowing something but ignoring it.
Well, you have a strong, you have a strong personality on the city council and that's, that's been the case for the last eight years. It's a strong personality and I don't think there's intent to break the law. And if there, and I think that if she directed something that was in variance with how you would do it, in variance with what, let's say, Daniel Valenzuela in his brain knows where his budget, where his money is, you know? The guy's pretty smart on that. He knows where the money is. And if something's going to break the bank, I've even heard him object to things.
Okay.
So I mean, I mean, that's the, that's the flow, but it's not like, "Mayor, I am your city manager. I'm not going to do that. Come fire me." And I've never heard him get to that point.
Hmm, it's amazing how folks get sold out to their paycheck, isn't it?
Okay, all right, next question. You big economic developer. You're going to die on that hill, I guess.
It's a hill worthy of dying on.
But you're, you're an economic developer. You have a lot of experience with economic development. You know a lot of the rules and everything. I'm going to ask you a general question. Coming up in the same election that you're running for city council, the voter's going to have to approve or disapprove a $400 million school bond and a $41.6 million Coliseum rehabilitation bond. One of the things I've looked at when I'm, you know, looking through, like, I'll give you an example. First of all, if you talk to Lane Carter, he's their county judge, he says, "Our biggest problem in San Angelo is we're not growing fast enough. We're not adding new properties to the, to the rolls fast enough to pay for all these needs we have." You know, the county has needs too, and they've, they've kind of remained silent on the bond issue because we got to get the school district through, the San Angelo ISD, and the Coliseum through first. And we're not growing enough to create new revenue. So if you go and look at some of the top employers of San Angelo, you have Angelo State University, you got Goodfellow Air Force Base, you got Shannon, you have Ethicon or Johnson and Johnson. None of those large employers pay any property taxes. They're either government institutions or tax exempt. So a lot of these, like this $400 million bond, it's going to be a 27 cent tax increase on people's, you know, school taxes. That's a huge amount. And it's all falling on residential taxpayers. What could we do in San Angelo to better or improve our economic development and start growing? We're not growing fast enough for all these needs.
Okay. When the half-cent sales tax was implemented, the city council drafted the ordinance that creates it. And they felt at the time politically, that if they did not dedicate a significant portion of that half-cent sales tax to water projects, we would dry up, pardon the pun.
Right, we'd have no water to grow.
Correct. Money has been invested in the lakes, the water purification systems, the well field, the pipeline to get it to San Angelo.
You're talking about the Hickory project.
Absolutely, okay. In many presentations, and I have crunched the numbers and looked very closely at it, under the direction of our current city management, the presentations made to council never look at the whole picture of our water supply. When the Hickory aquifer well field was pushed through, I was on the Costa D.C.
Right.
At the time, we were told that by doing this, we would have decades of water even if the lakes dried up.
And that would make sense. That would make sense.
Just this year, this past year, when the lake levels started to go down, the sky is falling, the sky is falling. We aren't going to have water. No, no, sir, I'm not going to stop right there because.
No, no, hold your, hold your thought. Hickory can produce at the time when they first built it, before they enhanced the well field, about eight million, nine million gallons a day. That's what I was told back then. So this well, well field is supposed to get us up to about 12 million, right?
Yes.
And my, and my numbers good?
They're good.
And then our, our consumption, like in 2015, when all this stuff was going on, was about 14, 15 million, right? If you average out the summer and the winter. And now we've gone up to about 18 million.
Yes.
Is that right?
Your numbers are close.
So, I mean, close enough to, to, to make, so we need 18 million, let's just say, we need 18, we need ability to pump 18 million gallons of water a day to maintain the city.
And as I understand, the pipeline is capable of it. The well field isn't quite yet.
So the pipeline can, can do 18 million, you think?
That's what we were told.
Well, I would think that the groundwater supply we have could probably handle, handle any busy day during the winter, but maybe not in the summer.
Okay.
So I don't know. I mean, those, that's my opinion based on years of covering the water issue. So what, go back to what you were saying about the inadequacies or the inadequacies of our water system. Go ahead.
Okay. Whenever the, the lakes start to go down, there's a panic cry that seems to forget that we've got the well field. The numbers presented can be made to say anything. They want to have a panic, they create a panic. Just in the way it's spoken of. When I serve on council and I fully expect to win this race, I will require that any presentation show the whole picture and not look at the elephant through a small knot hole in the fence.
And so the whole picture, what you're trying to get presented is Lake Ivy is our primary source of water. It pumps well enough, I mean, on a given non-drought day, you can get 20 million gallons out of that thing pretty easily.
Yes.
Right? And so what you're saying is if it goes down, you could maybe go do half the Hickory, half Ivy, and as Ivy, you know, depletes, maybe you can go 100% Hickory.
Yes.
And we have plenty of water. Is that your argument?
That is my argument.
Okay, I'm going to quote you something from Dwayne Morrison, the former mayor. He said, "The minute we start pumping 15 million gallons of water a day out of the Hickory, they're going to cry." All the, you know, the people who live down there in McCullough County are going to cry, say, "We're trying to murder them," you know, and.
Of course, the logic tells you the water table's going to drop.
Yes.
Not all of their old existing wells are deep enough to continue to tap the, the lower aquifer.
Right, so your agriculture down there will suffer if there's any left. Most of them are hunting ranches, right?
They are now.
Yeah. So what would you say about that? Like politically, it would be hard to pump Hickory at the full capacity for an extended amount of time.
You're right, but if we are in drought conditions, you have to decide what things in your budget you're going to cut. Tough decisions have to be made. And as council member, I am prepared to help the other six members of council make those tough decisions.
Okay, so the last question I have on the water issue, and then we'll go back to economic development. What do you think, when you say you want them to give you the whole picture about water, what are they trying to extract out of council today by just talking about the, the surface water, which is primarily the, the Ivy supply?
It's a manipulation of the numbers. And the point I'm really trying to make is that because of the insight I have, the many years' experience, I will insist upon full disclosure of all the relevant facts. Not just taking a presentation saying, "Well, that, that sure sounds good. We need to make a decision this way." Too many things are done with smoke and mirrors with our current city management and city council. It needs to stop. It needs to be forthright, truthful, and questioned to the nth degree. Is this truly giving us all the facts?
Okay, so you want to know where all the water is and that's example of giving you all the facts. Okay. Back to the economic development. So we're stuck with the 72% going to water development projects. I would presume that 100% of that 72% money, of the half-cent sales tax revenue, which is what, about 11 million a year?
Roughly.
Something like that. So 72% of that is already spoken for and is financing these large water projects.
We've incurred a lot of debt that does depend on that 72%.
You can't just say, "I'm going to stop doing the 72% water." It's already spoken for on bonds.
Well, the, again, the ballot issue that created the half-cent sales tax dedicated 72%. That's almost as though telling a kid, "You've got $20 allowance every week." He'll find a way, so long as you end up with zero by the end of the week. He'll find a way to spend all $20.
Right.
I believe that they continue to find ways to spend all $72 million a year.
Or 72%.
Or 72, I misspoke that. Sorry about that.
That's okay. I misspoke enough too, so.
Okay, we are human, right?
Right.
Okay, they find a way to spend that 72%. When in fact, a better approach to this, in my opinion, would be resubmit the ballot to the public and say, "We're going to grandfather the 72%. Give it a timeout. Give it a sunset."
So as you pay off debt, you can, you can go ahead and.
Less money going to the water.
Right.
Dedicated to the water and more money potentially being made available to the economic development that we also need to keep in balance. The balance isn't always going to be 28%, 72%. But if there were a sunset on the 72%, water projects could still be brought to the, the independent corporation that is the Costa D.C., City of San Angelo Development Corporation. It is not a department of the city. Many people are confused about that. And then the state legislature set up development corporations to be that way. But in that way, the, the ballot no longer speaks to always having to spend something even if it's not required. We're seeing that with DOGE on the federal level. Just because there were, were budgeted items, doesn't mean that budget item is still justified.
Right.
So to put a sunset on the 72%, okay. In a couple of years, we have another $20 million project that needs to be weighed. Present it to the Costa D.C. board.
Water or not, give me a water project.
Let's focus on water.
Okay.
They no longer have the dedicated 72%. The city could still go to Costa D.C. and say, "This is a worthy project to increase the, the water supply toward economic development. We would request that you approve a $20 million allocation."
Okay, what I can, what I'm concerned as a citizen of this area with Costa D.C. is we tied our hands with the 72%. I think you made a very good presentation of why and how.
Yes.
So we only have $4 million to work with every year.
Correct.
You can't buy a whole lot of infrastructure projects or anything like that, like a spur arena.
Correct.
With $4 million. And then you have all the, all the layers of bureaucracy in the city that takes, you know, 721 million, or $721,000 of the 4 million.
We've had this conversation in the past. Y'all can look at that on YouTube or on my campaign website. We've got it linked.
And it goes to the city staff for a city services contract. So now we're down to, what, 325? When all this money is taken out,
Yes.
we're stuck, we're left with just $1.6 million roughly in our Costa, Costa D.C. Out of, out of 11, 12 million dollars, we're left with $1.6 million to recruit, find, sell San Angelo as an economic entity.
And provide incentives that would attract them, realizing that other cities are competing by giving those same corporations offers of incentives.
And so if you put this in, you, you, our comparable cities, we always talk about our comparable cities. Abilene probably has $20 million a year in half-cent sales tax. Lubbock is a little different. They have, they don't have a half-cent sales tax. They have an eighth-cent sales tax.
Yes.
So their budget is pretty much same, the same as San Angelo, but it doesn't have the 72% water requirement.
The, the funds available for true economic development are comparable.
Right, and so.
Roughly.
So what I'm getting at is we have tied our hands and we're down to $1.6 million to actively recruit businesses.
Correct.
And we have no economic development leadership. There's no, I don't even know if you have an, we have a kind of an apparatus of Costa D.C., but we don't have, you know, a, a full-time head of Costa D.C., a full-time CEO. We're giving money to the chamber in dwindling amounts to finance two guys that sit in a 10 by 10 office who are mid, mid-level managers.
They're seldom in that office. They are out kicking butt.
That's good. And, but I'm saying they need to have more support.
Absolutely.
I mean, when you get to a certain point in life, I mean, you're going to bring someone to your office and you're sharing it with another guy, I think they ought to have their own office, for example. And that, that would be good for a sales team. If I had a executive sales operation, I would want that. But we don't have that and we, and the chamber's gotten the same amount of money, about $262,000 a year since 2019, over the hump of COVID and all this inflation. And we're still funding the chamber at the same amount. But the bottom line is, we really don't have a, an overarching vision for economic development. And why is that important to you guys out there? It's because you're asked to go finance a $397 million school bond project and you hardly have enough new properties coming online here in San Angelo to help pay for it. And to give you an example, Lubbock, Lubbock ISD, this, this election, May 5th, has a $297 million bond project. You know how much the tax increase to the companies that is?
How much?
Zero.
Okay.
It's just like Frisco, you know, Frisco's growing so fast that, you know, they can do these bonds and not increase the tax rates. And that's where we need to get to, but I feel like we don't have, I guess, the unified vision to really point our limited resources in economic development to where they need to be developed, be pointed.
You're right. We're trying to, to get blood out of a tournant.
Right.
And it's just not going to happen. Things don't fly without funding. But where do we get that funding? Right now, I can't tell you. I am not armed with all the, the same information that our city council currently has. Put me on the council and I will. And I will assure you that I will make the best possible decisions and cast my vote in that way. But remember, I will only be one-seventh of the council vote. But I might be able to persuade others to vote similarly.
What do you think of this idea? Our private sector, the chamber, already has a director, a chamber CEO and president, okay? Why do we need to have also paying a similar salary to a Costa D.C. president who we can't find? No, we can't hire, we can't find someone to hire for that position. Why don't we just give it to the chamber and have the, the corporation make the, the chamber CEO, also the CEO of Costa D.C.?
Number one, state law does not allow that.
Really? State law wouldn't allow that at all?
No.
I thought it was an independent corporation.
It is an independent corporation, parented and in a sense subordinate to the city council.
Okay.
Not operationally, okay? The city council can create a development corporation. But at that point, it's hands-off. They are an independent corporation of, under Texas law. They are supposed to be able to hire and fire their own people. They are supposed to be able to have their own legal representation.
And it sounds like a chamber of commerce.
No, it's not. Chambers, chambers of commerce were not founded under state law.
I understand.
So we can draw that line in black and white.
But if the council voted to say, "Take our independent corporation and, and give a management contract to the chamber," what would be wrong with that?
You would still have the Costa D.C. board has to exist.
Okay, that's fine. Make the chamber board the Costa D.C. board.
Chamber board is voted on by members of the business community.
They are.
Not appointed by, I'm sorry, not nominated by council members and appointed by the whole council.
You understand what I'm trying to. You understand what I'm trying to do? I'm trying to combine a salaried position that's already there.
Yes.
And put it in charge of.
You, like our city council, is trying to find a loophole and do something illegally.
Well, don't kill me on the illegalities of trying to save money.
Trying to save money is a great idea, but if there are legal boundaries within you, within which you must stay, stop trying to deviate, which is exactly what the current city council and for several decades. Councils have done.
Option two, since we have so little money, one point six million dollars to recruit and, uh, new businesses, why don't we increase the chamber's contract from two hundred sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars a year to one point six million dollars and give it all to the chamber? And so y'all build up a business recruitment operation over there, get more offices, you know, whatever you need to do. You're working for the COSA DC board with oversight from the city council.
The only level of oversight the city council has is to ratify or decline any, uh, project that the COSA DC board proposes. Okay, that being said, you're, you're getting us deep in the swamp now, deep in the muck and mire.
It's not the swamp. The swamp, the swamp has bad connotations.
No, it does. Now, let's just say the muck in the mire, okay? I want to say this concisely because I know we're, we're speaking to the general public. No insult to the public.
Fifty years from now, people will be able to see this.
That's right. So let, let me try to get the, the most fitting verbiage for this. When I was on the COSA DC board, we had an item that we wanted to increase the allocation to the contractors.
Which, of which the city.
The city, the COSA DC board uses the chamber of commerce as marketing arm for the city's economic development, economic development effort.
Right.
We wanted to increase that budget. But every time we discussed it, because of the illegal structure of city, uh, the city manager actually having an operational control over the staff of COSA DC, which violates the economic development law. Another thing we'll address once I'm on council.
Let me, let me, let me explain this to the, I'm gonna explain how, so keep right there. So the way the COSA DC board staff works, you have four positions. And of the four positions, you have the head of COSA DC or the president, director, director. And then you have, uh, three additional, uh, workers.
Correct.
Your total payroll is four hundred fourteen thousand dollars, something like that, a couple of years ago. And so those people that work for COSA DC are card-carrying members of city employment, you know.
They are city employees.
A hundred percent city employees. So yes, wouldn't, now here's a question and then you go back into it. If they are city employees, would not the city manager have operational control of them?
That's illegal, okay? And let me back up to what the ED law, economic development law actually says. What it says is effectively, the cities or the economic development corporation's staff can be administered by the city employment, uh, umbrella. In other words, they could collect city employment pay as a contractor.
Right.
Essentially, they're an employment contractor, not operational control.
So basically, the city is an ADP.
They can have human resources support.
They're an ADP.
ADP, back in the day, Kelly girls.
Yeah.
Exactly. They're contract employees. And the city then acts as an employee, employment contractor under our current illegal structure. And this, the city council years ago actually wrote this into the ordinance. That the, the COSA DC must use the city for their administrative services. That is so blatantly illegal. When I got into that debacle years, several years ago, I consulted with Carlton Schwab, who is the president of the Texas Economic Development Council.
Right.
It is the only organization the state legislature authorizes to train on economic development law. And Carlton Schwab, when I described what's happening in San Angelo, he looked at what, what we were doing and he said, that's illegal. Keep up the fight.
And it's in the charter.
It is in the COSA DC charter and there is an ordinance requiring the, the COSA DC to do this.
So the ordinance.
Both of which are in conflict with state law.
The ordinance can be changed with two meetings of city council.
Yes.
The charter for COSA DC, what is required to change the charter, just to vote of the, of the COSA DC board?
Uh, to, to change the, the COSA DC charter would be the same process of, uh, proposal, approval, wave it through. But then it also has to go to city council to be ratified.
Right.
When that went to the head that it did last time, they effectively fired me from the COSA DC board. In fact, they violated whistleblower law. But I did not prosecute it. And do you know why I did not seek compensation for being persecuted and prosecuted as a whistleblower?
Why?
Because it would not have been the perpetrators of that crime that paid the price. It would have been you, the taxpayers, that paid for their illegal actions. So I, in my ethics, refused to prosecute that.
Okay, so back to, you know, most people that are watching this are going to say, why do I even care about COSA DC? But I just gave them the reason, you know, you're asked to pay for all these bonds.
That's right.
And we're not growing.
Well, when you hit, anytime you hit the cash register, when you buy anything and you pay your eight and a quarter percent sales tax, one half of one cent of that goes to COSA DC. And that, that means citizens, people who shop here, who live out in the county, any money spent in San Angelo. So effectively, if COSA DC and that half cent sales tax were, weren't here, you would be paying seven point seven five percent in sales tax. So every time you go to the cash register, every dollar you spend, one half of a penny.
I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's true, or if you could change the law where the city is saying, one percent, we get one point five percent going into the general revenue fund. I'm not, I'm not sure because if you go anywhere, places that don't have COSA DC, they're still eight and a quarter.
It can be because of a water fund. It can, there are many other, but many other entities, the total of which cannot add up to more than eight point two five.
Right. I would think that they would still.
Hospital districts are another.
Right. All right, so you're on city council and you have a say in this. And we've explained the problem. You've explained some of the minutia behind the problem.
I sure did.
How would you fix this so that the next time we're asked to, uh, vote on a half million dollar, a half billion dollar bond, we actually have growth in San Angelo?
Okay, that's a very good question, Joe. And let me be clear to the public first and foremost. The, the half billion dollar round number bond that we're looking at for the school district has nothing to do with the city council. It has nothing to do with the city. It is strictly San Angelo Independent School District.
Right, different government.
But the growth that would help pay for it can be highly stimulated by the city. And I would, I will work, when I'm elected to the city council, to stimulate that growth, encourage that growth, make San Angelo, uh, attractive to businesses who will settle here, employ here, potentially purchase their goods with which they're going to manufacture whatever their product is. Everything we can do here. Could I mention another thing? It's bleeding our city horribly.
What's that?
Our city purchasing department has, uh, gone to using co-op buying.
Right.
It's a way to circumvent competitive bidding. By doing so, there are co-ops around the country, around the state, that they can plug into and get bids right away.
Not bids, it's, it's like.
It's not a bid, it's a buying board.
Yeah, buy board.
It, it's also referred to as a reverse auction of sorts. But effectively, all, all the jobs that are paid, uh, being paid for by these outside contractors is money leaving San Angelo.
So let me.
Instead of hiring local contractors by competitive bid.
Let me give some context to this.
Yes, please.
Bid board or buy board was what, uh, Tim Vasquez, when he, when he went to trial. The whole thing about that radio system, the Harris radio system.
Yes.
They wanted to buy it on a, on a bid board or a buy board. And, uh, what got Tim in trouble and what reason he has, three felony convictions for honest mail fraud.
Yes.
Are three checks that they sent to Dalian Wells, who was not on the, on the board, not on the bid board. But they, they gave the, gave Dalian Wells, like, the, the amount of money it would be from another vendor that was on the bid board.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
It does.
Checks. So those three checks actually landed a city official in federal prison for fifteen point five years. So bid boards, bid boards are, I think they're good for like buying paper clips and stuff. But when you're, when you're designing custom solutions and a water treatment plan, right? Or, or fixing a whole lot of water pipes underneath the roads and stuff, they, you know, they, they still need to use the bid process for those really large projects.
Uh, it, it's picking and choosing your, uh, contractors.
Right.
Essentially, without competitive bidding, which would afford those jobs locally. Do yourselves a favor. Hit Google. And just read up on cooperative purchasing by municipalities and socialism.
Okay.
Co-op buying is a socialist process. We are a, a free nation based on the American free enterprise system. And cooperative buying is just about the total opposite of it.
Okay, I can almost agree with you on that because in advertising buying with car dealerships, you have to be anointed by the big, big three car dealers in order to sell advertising.
You mean part of a syndicate?
Yes.
Oh, oh my goodness.
Yes, Rico, all that. I was going to ask you, we, we, we gone into the, into the, uh, economic development side, which is the growth side. Now let's go on the tax side.
Yes.
Now, I have never seen a city council in my twelve years of covering this wonderful city of ours, San Angelo. I've never seen a city council pass a budget during the summer that lowered the absolute taxes that you would pay. They always say, we're keeping the rate the same or we're lowering the rate, but the amount of money that's coming in is higher because of the increased valuations of homes and businesses and industrial and commercial property. One time I saw a fight over this, over the, over a municipality trying to stay near the no new revenue rate. So when you go into budget, this, the, uh, you already know how much, kind of how much money is on the, how much valuation that you're going to tax is. And they know what rate on the low end would be the no new revenue rate. If you tax at that rate, then there's no extra income, uh, year over year. And then there's the voter approval rate. So there's a spread. Voter approval rate is higher and above that rate, you would, you would increase the revenue to the city by, uh, three point five percent or greater than the previous year. So you always have to set the tax rate between the no new revenue rate and the voter approval rate. If I can imagine my, my hands, you know, this range.
Just remember your high school algebra classes. So you'll, you'll keep up with Joe on this.
In Lubbock this year, the, uh, the new mayor, Mark McBrayer, uh, went to bat for the taxpayers. He said, this year I want to tax Lubbock at the no new revenue rate. I don't want to have a tax increase. And he, he argued and he got one other councilman on there. He was an Aggie attorney, got to agree with him. But the establishment Republicans, and you know, there are, there are all but two on the council are generally Republicans. The establishment laughed at him, said, you can't do that because you're going to cut so these, so many of these great projects and you're going to cut the, the, uh, you're not going to allow us to visit our sister city in Japan and things like that. And he eventually lost. He was not able to maintain the tax rate at the no new revenue rate. I've never seen anyone go to bat for the taxpayer in San Angelo, Texas. Every year in the city, I see, I mean, almost with a smirk on their face when they have to read that what the tax rate is going to be. And they say, it's going to be a tax increase, right? Because no fact, if you're bringing in more revenue, it's a tax increase. What are your thoughts on that? Would you, would you try to fight for no new revenue rate tax?
You bring up a, a very good, uh, analogy or comparison. I'm going to step back to what we were talking about on water presentations before. When the city government, city government says, we lowered the tax rate. Cause effectively they did. They lowered the tax rate. They are only looking at one multiplier. And I'm going to simplify this. In the algebraic equation, that is property values, which this year went up incredibly. The tax rate necessarily had to come down because there was a cap on what the end product could be.
But I'm, I'm going to interrupt here. Technically, there's not a cap. If you're above the three point five percent revenue increase, you can still tax them there, but you're going to have to go to the polls and get people to.
Yeah, so effectively.
They had to vote for it.
It was a cap because they didn't dare take it to the voters. They knew it was going to get shut down. So that being said, let's call it a cap, okay? But our local politicians are able to say, we lowered the tax rate. They didn't lower taxes. As Joe has already pointed out, the end result was still a few percent higher. It's the smoke and mirrors matter of this is where politics meets business management. I'll have to credit, uh, Mary Coffey, who, because she ended up running unopposed, will be seated for single member district six on May third, following the May third election and canvassing the votes and that whole process. But, uh, she asked me a question the other day. What do I think of zero-based budgeting? Where each year you start out with a zero budget and everything that you add to it has to be justified. In effect, this is what we're seeing on the national level with the Department of Government Efficiency. They're saying if it's not justified, we aren't going to fund it. You mentioned a sister city that wanted to go to their sister city in Japan.
Right.
Things like that with zero-based budgeting could be cut. There are those in our current city financed food chain who have stated off the record that they would resign if we ever went to it. Now I can only suppose why that might be. Are they trying to hide things that they don't want exposed that they've been spending money on for many years? When I am seated on the city council come May third, I will be pushing for zero-based budgeting. Thank you, Mary Coffey.
Okay, so let's talk about zero-based budgeting and what problems politically you have with that. It's not so much the leadership of the city wants to leave you or wants to quit. It's the rank and file. And when you are in local politics, okay? You have thousand city workers.
Roughly.
Okay, those are thousand votes right there. Right? And so you're asking, if they, if you're, you're asking the city employee to vote for you, which could possibly eliminate their job and or not give them a raise at the work, that's the best case. They won't get as much of a raise as they want, or they might get a pay cut, or they'll lose their job. So that's the problem because the turnout for a city election for a mayoral race is eight, seven, eight thousand, maybe nine thousand.
I believe it's going to be far higher because of the two bonds on the.
Yeah, probably so. But regardless, I mean, a thousand votes is a lot of votes.
You're assuming that all thousand city employees, number one, live in the city.
And vote.
And number two, vote.
But I, I would bet you that they do. It's a voting block. It's a large.
With an issue that's of interest, more will turn out.
Yeah, but it's a, this is a large voting block. I mean, can you tell me of another voting block outside of Paul Ann Church that is more than a thousand votes, possible votes?
I'm not even going to hazard to guess.
I mean, I don't think there is.
Okay, but let's get back to a, a point you made. There, they might be concerned about losing their jobs. Okay, with zero-based budgeting, what would really be identified are the things that are being spent merely because this particular department always gets half a million dollars a year. I'm just pulling that number out of the sky, not picking on any department. Let's help them justify, why are you spending half a million dollars on it? Chances are, it's not on your head count.
Probably is.
But it, but it would, but you would be able to free up enough money from the things that, well, oh gosh, you know, we have this money, we have to spend it before the end of the year, otherwise we won't get it next year.
So we have parks.
So you do some of that belt tightening and there's more money to go to the employees for their.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm devil's advocate. There's Parks and Recreation. I, but I would bet you, Parks and Recreation, a majority of the budget is personnel. Now here's the issue.
Have you looked at their equipment budget?
Here's the issue with that. The city council and all the budget sessions I've ever looked at, they never consider the personnel part of the budget for each department. That's all, they'll say, we're going to give every city employee five percent across the board pay raise and we want another. That's all, they'll say, we're gonna give every city employee five percent across the board pay raise, and we want another three percent for incentive pay. Boom, we're done with that. Then now your, your individual departments, whatever those people are making, they're getting a three percent, five percent raise. So, so your zero-based budgeting would require each department head to incorporate their payroll into their request. Is that what you're saying?
Why not?
Well.
You're, you're playing devil's advocate, and the only answer to that is, why would you not want it to be more accountable?
Okay, well, more accountable or cheaper, less expensive.
If that's the net result, yes. But if you really analyze it on that level and look at the, the payroll for each department, reasonably, you would also be looking at, are the rates of pay we're paying for Parks employees commensurate with what they could earn outside of city employment? If it's not, then they deserve the raise. If nothing else, but to keep them on board.
Right.
Why lose years of training and experience just because you got your, your fist so tightly on, well, it's the way we've always done it?
That's true. And, and also.
That's not logical.
Employee longevity is there also. So, so, so you are, by putting the employees in each department onto the zero-based budgeting platform, you are putting them somewhat in peril as to how, if, if this, this particular employee is gonna get a raise, or maybe we need to, you know, lower them because oil field's gone away, for example. You know, those kinds of things when you do zero-based budgeting and you, and you pull out.
It is something to be considered.
You're basically not pulling out the person, you're pulling out the billet.
Yes.
And you're looking at the billet.
All right, can we do more with fewer people? Sometimes that's necessary.
One of the biggest problems with the city right now is they do have fewer people. They don't, they can't fill all their positions. I mean.
It's time to look at where we could squeeze the budget and find more money for employees.
There's probably money that's not being spent that's budgeted it right now. Because they have so many, so many positions that aren't filled.
Give me zero-based budgeting and we'll find out where that money is being spent.
Right.
Because it, it's sure not building up anywhere. I don't see it.
I have one last issue to talk about.
Yes, sir.
Um, the rodeo association needs a new venue. Now, I'm telling you that, that is a true statement. They need a new venue. When you look at the competition in the rodeo world, like, you know, Dicky's Arena in Fort Worth, for example, you, they took a, they took a lesser rodeo and put a lot of glitz on it, and now it's competing very heavily with the storied and, I guess, histor- the, the storied and historic San Angelo rodeo, which is a gigantic driver of economic, I guess, it, it, it gives the city some identity. It's very important. Um, I'll back up a little bit, and I'm sorry, my questions are included a lot.
Go right ahead.
You know, uh, many years ago, I think in the early eighties, maybe late seventies, uh, there was a proposal out to build an equestrian center. For, for those, in great pre, that means horses. Anyway, jokes.
He mentioned Aggies early. Don't feel like you're picked on.
Yeah, um, so we were gonna build a gigantic equestrian center. We're gonna have horse shows and those kinds of things, which is a lot of money, cause I mean, if you ever watched Taylor Sheridan, that's all he does, you know, in Yellowstone, you know, the, the, the equestrian world is, is a lot of money. Well, the big donor for it was GTE Southwest, and I think they pulled out and they decided not to do it. And they canceled the project. Abilene picks it up. And today, they have the equestrian stuff. We have the rodeo. We gave up an opportunity there. I think if we don't help the rodeo, or if the rodeo is not able to improve its venue, the same thing might happen to us. Not that Abilene would take our rodeo from us, but somebody might. Some other city might do it.
It's a competitive world.
It's very competitive world. So in order to do that, we have to take a venue, which is the Coliseum, that's where the rodeo is held, that probably does a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in revenue, other than the rodeo.
Yes.
Okay, not a whole lot you can pay for financing something with the annual payments a hundred and fifty thousand.
Many events there, uh, some of the, the small shows and such barely pay to lighten heat the facility.
Yeah, so we're gonna take this facility, and we're basically going to rebuild it. Forty-two point forty, is it forty-two million, forty-two point six million?
Yeah, I believe that's.
And they're asking the voters to, to vote on this, to, for the city to issue the bonds for forty-two point six million dollars to do this rehabilitation of the, of the, of the Coliseum. Is that a good thing for the city to do?
Okay. I'm going to approach this, Joe, as though I'm already on the council.
Okay.
Okay. My opinion does not matter. I mentioned earlier the charter and the code of ordinances. I'm not supposed to bring my opinion into it. I'm supposed to represent the people. So I'm gonna share some things that people have already been sharing with me.
Okay.
Let me, I'll add a second preface, okay? I'm lucky. On May third, the bond is going to be voted on. I cannot be in office before the bond is in, in the history books. So really, what I say really doesn't add or detract from it, okay? Let's talk about the pros. I believe it's thirty-seven million dollar economic impact is the number they're, they're using for the rodeo. That's a, that's a big economic impact. Granted, it happens in a matter of weeks or days.
Basically three weeks.
Basically three weeks, okay? Uh, there are very few other businesses, manufacturers or otherwise, that have that same economic impact on San Angelo annually. What would we do to fight? To keep that business here? We talked about economic development earlier. One of its programs is the business retention uh, and expansion. Uh, program, B R E P, Business Retention Expansion Program. Uh, we would spend a lot of money keeping that here. But what we're asking, what the bond is asking the people to do is to fund this retention by expanding. I- i- it's sort of like, if, if you don't maintain your car, how long do you expect to be able to keep driving it?
Right.
It's eventually gonna peter out. The rodeo has every prospect in the world of waning if we don't keep up with the other cities trying to compete to attract the rodeo. And it's not gonna be because of the local rodeo association, whether it succeeds or not. It's gonna be about their sponsors. It's gonna be about the participants. If they decide, hey, this other venue looks a whole lot sweeter than the one we got in San Angelo. But then let's look at the downside. The cons. One that hit me square in the face recently was a phone call I got. Said, we have a current city, sitting city council who in a tiers decision decided contrary to what the voters had voted into place, they would not spend money in the north tiers zones for improvement of facades and handicap access and such. If an applicant were a church or any other five oh one C three.
A nonprofit.
A nonprofit. Well, folks, you may not realize it or not, but the San Angelo Rodeo Association is a five oh one C three nonprofit to the benefit of children. All the scholarships they give away. When I countered with that thought, I was reminded that, uh, yeah, but who really profits from the rodeo association money? What about the purses that are given away? They are cash awards that are taxed.
Right.
That, that's not the nonprofit arm of it.
Right. And the beer, and the beer sold.
Yeah, the beer sold, okay. But what, what about the, the recently constructed dragway going out toward Arden? There are hobbyists who race cars. Rodeo participants are hobbyists that most everything they do is on a four-legged animal.
I disagree that they're hobbyists because they're professional athletes.
There are some of the, the racers that are professional racers. That is their, okay. It's not an apples-to-apples comparison, but let's look at the picture.
Right.
I'm weighing only the pros and cons, and as a city councilman, I will be called upon to weigh the pros and the cons. One of the ordinances I mentioned is something that the city council does not do. Effectively, it says that at each, with, pardon me, with each agenda item, every council member is supposed to bring the pros and cons that have been brought to them by the people. When's the last time you heard the mayor ask the, the councilman, what do your people say for or against?
I've heard her talk about people talking to her.
Which people? The people with whom she favors, or does she present both sides? I have never.
I think when you.
Never heard both sides.
Find that when you, unless you go door knocking as a public official, that the people in your circle, I mean, you, you have to actively try to expand your circle. But the people in your circle are gonna be the people in your circle, and you're gonna end up doing the same thing. In four years, we'll talk to you, and you're gonna have, you know, two dozen people to talk to you. Because that's just the way it is. People are busy. They don't, most people don't even know the city. The, the mayor is not ahead of the school district.
I disagree with you, Joe.
So.
Because, uh, I have a tremendous circle of friends.
Okay.
Okay, who do talk to me, pro and con on many issues.
So I would, I would.
Granted, many remain silent on most issues.
Yes.
But if it's something they have to say, they've become very comfortable with talking to me.
I would argue.
I've said in the past that I've become an unofficial ombudsman to the, for the city.
I will argue that someone who is sitting in a restaurant almost twenty-four, seven, or all weekend hours, probably hears a lot of feedback.
Yes.
So. In, in or outside of, of, of the mayor's circle. But regardless of that, you started talking about, uh, how would you vote for the Coliseum? How are you gonna vote for the Coliseum? Pro bond?
The US Constitution and the state constitution guarantee my right to a secret ballot.
Okay.
And I am going to exercise that right.
But you're running for office.
That's fine.
All right, so John, you will not tell me how you're gonna vote for the, the rodeo Coliseum.
I want people to make their own decisions, but I want you to be informed voters, just as I will be an informed council member.
You brought up one more thing, and I know I said the rodeo is, the, the, the Coliseum would be the last thing I asked you, but you brought up tiers.
Yes.
And I, I'm, I'm very well-versed in tiers because I've covered a lot of their meetings, especially John Mark Hoag's, um, crusade to try to get, get, get sent to me Baptist Church funded and some of their things. I've gone up on MLK Boulevard. I've talked to the preachers and the, and the people that are running the nonprofits. One of the arguments that, uh, the argument they have, the argument they have on that side of town is the reason why people aren't utilizing the tiers money. And just for y'all to understand, tiers is tax increment reinvestment zone money. And it's a very large downtown. It basically spans from the new Wal- the Twenty-Ninth Street Walmart down there past Desiree's, okay? Did I give a good description of it?
That's both tier zones. There's a north and a south, basically divided by the railroad.
Second, so on this, uh, the northern guys, the northern tiers, and we artificially divided our tiers in two. It's not a state law or anything. We can undivide our tiers.
They established the tier zone, and then the, the basically Lakeview area felt neglected.
Right.
So a second tier zone was established, and that evolved into south and north.
Right, so, so what we need to do is, in my opinion, this is my opinion, because I'm a military guy.
Yes.
If I'm going to war, I wanna be able to concentrate my forces where, where it gets the most bang for the buck.
Okay.
Because we have northern and southern tiers, southern tiers is traditionally, not now, but traditionally has been where all the growth and all the new projects are.
Yes.
You have millions of dollars up there in the northern tiers that cannot be used for southern tiers projects because you have that great, that artificial divide. And it really is an artificial design, divide, because the city council can wipe it out and put tiers into one big pot, and then we can direct the funds.
If I understand correctly, they can't do it without a vote.
Okay, well, let, let, let's go to the vote.
Put it to the voters.
Put it to the voters. Would you, would you support a referendum to combine the, the north and south tiers?
I would support a referendum.
And you're from Lakeview, though. You're representing Lakeview. What, how, how are you gonna get votes?
Supporting the referendum does not say I'm, I would vote for or against it, Joe. Don't confuse that.
All right, so would you campaign against, uh, the referendum to combine the two tiers?
Since that's not a ballot initiative yet, I'll reserve that. But let's talk about the current situation.
Okay, we're back to this. The, the reason why the northern tiers, uh, at least on MLK, is because the people who own businesses, and there's some exceptions, like Western Sky, uh, Steakhouse, they, they've used tiers money up there, but there's exceptions. But the reason why it's not so common up there as it is in the southern, southern tiers is because a lot of those businesses aren't there to grow. They're there to maintain, and they don't want to improve their property and risk having their property, uh, valuations go through the roof. And so the only way you're gonna spur economic development on MLK, for example, is to give money to nonprofits. So they, because they're, they're exempt. Now, on the other side of it, and this is what Tom Thompson, your predecessor, uh, believed, is that if you are a nonprofit, you're not technically, uh, you're not taxed. So money from your operation is not going into the tiers fund, so you shouldn't be able to participate.
Okay. Once again, I, I'm going to go back to what laws say.
What what?
What laws say.
Okay.
Okay. When the southern tiers, what is now known as the southern tiers, was established, they specifically said nonprofits were not permitted to apply. When they cloned the northern tiers, I do not know who chose to leave that caveat out of the law. But what the voters voted on did not exclude nonprofits.
So stop right there. And the way they're getting around this is that your predecessor, Tom Thompson, always votes with, uh, with Mayor Gunner. So you, prevents you from having that supermajority to change, or, or, the supermajority to, 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 uh, to basically approve the tiers board's decisions. So John Mark Hoag might send, hey, give Gethsemane that money.
Yes.
It goes to city council. I think it has to have two-thirds majority for them to approve it. And always you have the mayor and Tom Thompson vote against it, which prevents them from getting there.
So you raise a good point, and I appreciate that you brought Tom Thompson's name up since he's running for mayor.
Right.
And those of you watching this are obviously interested in local politics.
And this is very long. I hope we are not boring you.
Yeah, it's about to get exciting.
Yeah.
Okay. When the city council denied what the tiers board had approved toward the use of tiers funds for nonprofits, specifically churches. That was approved. That was a legal decision to approve because what the voters enacted did not prohibit nonprofits from applying.
Uh, in the northern tiers.
In the northern tiers.
But not in the southern.
Okay, so when the city council overruled that position, it is my opinion that they illegally discriminated against nonprofits.
I will stop right there. I would say it's not illegal, but it was discrimination.
It was illegal, and the precedent, here's the legal precedent.
Turn down a project on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, but the rationale was nonprofit. So let's.
It was.
Let, let's step.
And, and they stated so.
Let's step into the San Angelo Live courtroom.
Right.
Okay. You establish the southern tiers and say nonprofits are not allowed to apply. You establish the northern tiers and you leave that prohibition out. No, not unanswered. You specifically leave it out because the voters were told were replicating tiers. So by default, nonprofits can. The city council therefore lacks the authority to usurp a prohibition that is not written that they can do. I believe it was illegal. And when elected, folks in single-member district two, Twenty-Ninth Street, north to the northern border, the area around Kirby Park, uh, Fannin Elementary, the former Altaloma Elementary, and the, a little area around uh, Robin Hood Trail in Nottingham. That's my single-member district. That's where I live. That's who I want to represent. But a big part of that is in the, the northern tiers. So in representing you and that portion that's further south than Twenty-Ninth Street, the, the other part of the northern tiers, it will be my almost immediate proposal upon being seated that those nonprofits who have applied and had been approved by the tiers board should be approached immediately by the tiers board and ask, do you want to revitalize your application? If so, we are simply gonna resubmit it to the city council with a distinct, uh, statement that it is illegal for you to deny it again based on your previous.
Based on your nonprofit.
Based on the nonprofit status. They did not have the legal authority to deny that.
Okay.
And I would, I would move to have, if those organizations want it, reestablished. Go for it. They may. Go for it, they may have to submit or collect new bids from contractors because months have passed.
John, why do we even have tiers, I mean, all we're doing is we're taking wealthy landowners, wealthier than most people who don't own land. Who are already over, they're already overtaxed in their apartments because, you know, the tax rates on apartments are not homestead-exempted. They can go up as, you know, the rent can have, has to go up as much as possible to be able to cover these taxes. So why do we even have a tiers where we have all these residential, and I'm worried about the rentals too, more than the residential property owners. Have to pay all these, these exorbitant rents and taxes. When, if you got rid of tiers today. I could put $650,000 in the annual budget of the county. And I could put over a million dollars in the budget of the city if I just got rid of tiers. A million dollars can buy a lot of police officers.
It can. But you were asking me earlier about economic growth. Economic growth is stimulated when there's an incentive to invest in the area. Tiers, the tax increment reinvestment zone, is established by state law. Cities can define an area. And basically, when those property taxes are paid, it does not go into the general fund. This is for the public's education. It does not go into the general fund, it goes into a separate. Piggy bank, that's got a negative connotation.
It goes into the tiers budget.
It goes into the tiers budget, okay? And that money, that money can only be spent in the reinvestment zone that's been established. So if I own a business in that area, if I own property in that area. The tax money does not go into the general fund to help maintain the streets in Southland, for example. That money can only go to projects within the tier zone. To help revitalize that area. Largely, it was a revitalization effort. Bring failing neighborhoods back up to par. It's got a lot of potential for the north part of town. And I encourage all business owners. If you don't improve. Do you ever expect to grow your business? Yes, you might end up paying a little bit more in property taxes. But if your business has grown, won't you be able to afford to pay more property taxes? It's a lack of, in my opinion, sound business sense, and if you want to fully understand that aspect of it. The ASU Small Business Development Center, 69 North Chadburn. Offers assistance to all businesses if you just walk in the door, it's free.
So this is your district in northern San Angelo, it's not known for having low crime rates. Wouldn't a better economic development policy be to hire more police officers and patrol the streets? And get rid of tiers to pay for it?
I disagree. A rising tide raises all ships unless your anchor is, anchor chain is too tight, and water comes up and gets into the boat.
Okay.
Okay. So as the economy increases. Because tiers has reinvested in those businesses. The tax money continues to come in, but other areas around are also going to come up. Because now you aren't around a blighted area, you're around a thriving area. So the periphery, those outside the zone. Will also rise up with it.
You told me to Google socialism.
Yes.
Isn't having, taking money from taxpayers and choosing property owners. And giving them $75,000 grants to improve their facade or to build a parking lot or put in a fire extinguisher system. Isn't that just socialism?
Aren't all taxes a form of redistribution?
Okay, so.
I rest my case.
So the last socialism thing back in the, previous in the conversation, we can just strike that. I found you liking a socialist, a socialist deal.
Because that involves contracting, not taxation.
Okay.
Let's be clear on that differentiation.
Okay.
You're trying to set a trap for me, Joe, and I'm not going to jump into it.
It's okay to be a socialist when you're taxing, but not when you're contracting. Or vice versa, it's okay, yeah.
It's a misapplication.
Right.
In socialism, they own it all.
It sounds to me like if you're the government, you're picking winners and losers, and that's what they're doing. I mean, by denying those nonprofits, they were the losers and they picked the winners. By awarding the grants to for-profit businesses along Chadburn, Oaks, that area. They're picking winners and losers, government body is.
We are a nation of law.
Got you.
And the law with regard to tiers has a strong differentiation, black and white. Southern tiers, nonprofits can't apply. Northern tiers, there is no mention whether or not, or whether nonprofits are prohibited from applying, therefore they can.
And you said you were in favor of combining the northern and southern tiers.
No, I am in favor of putting it on a referendum to let the people decide whether or not to combine them.
Another thing you won't vote for, okay, you won't, you won't tell me what your vote would be.
I'm entitled to a secret ballot. Just like. Months ago when I was part of an organization to initiate a petition to have our current. All seven members of our current council dismissed, recalled. We had, well, I'm not allowed to say whether we had one signature on each of the seven petitions or a total of 5,218. Not allowed to say what the number is.
I will tell you this.
But the reason that petition went no further than collecting signatures. Was thanks to a lawyer who pro bono looked over the petitions the day before we were going to turn it into the city clerk. And I was told, do not turn these petitions in. Because the now-former city attorney. Had chosen to use verbiage in the caption at the top of each form that violated what the law, the city charter said was supposed to be up there. What the charter says is that the issue of recall is to be put to the voters. What the city attorney, under someone's apparent instruction. Had put on there was that the undersigned want the named individuals recalled. That was a violation of voter rights. And if we had gone ahead and submitted those petitions, we would have been complicit. In the violation of the US and state constitutional requirement for a secret ballot. Because the undersigned were basically saying, I'm going to vote yes.
Got you.
Now, I do not know why that is now the former city attorney.
She got a better job in Fort Worth?
Why was she looking? I'll, that's all I'll say.
I will say.
We're going to clean up city government.
I will say this, the recall petitions that you were, you were going out. Had one city councilman particularly worried because he didn't have a whole lot of votes because he's in a small, less populated area, had less votes, and that was Harry Thomas. I think you only needed like 40 signatures on him and you could have recalled him.
Correct, but let's put it this way. All seven were included in that petition drive for only one reason. There were actually three who were actively violating the charter, the.
You got the other four because they weren't doing anything about it?
The other four because they knew of it, but did not say anything about it. Which is also a violation of those four documents that require the utmost in ethics. And rest assured, when I'm seated on that council, I will be policing the ethics of the seven.
All right, so this has been John Barrio. Candidate for SMD.
Two.
Two, I gotta get these, I need to start remembering all of them again, SMD two up in the north side.
Yes.
And early voting starts April 22nd.
Early voting, April 22nd, actual election day is Saturday, May the 3rd. And for those who don't have ready access to the city council map. The district is from 29th Street to the northern edge of town. Basically from Armstrong Street West. When you get to the river, it expands. It's essentially the neighborhoods around Kirby Park, Fannin Elementary, the former Altaloma Elementary. And then there's a little about four-street area on the other side of the east-west thruway. That includes Nottingham on down to Robin Hood. But if you want to look at that map, if you'll go to the City of San Angelo webpage. Click on Departments. Click on GIS, which is the Global Information System.
John, why don't you just take a screenshot and post it on your Facebook page?
Already got it there, okay, but once you're in the GIS mapping, click on Elections. And you will be able to blow it up, see your street name, pick out your place, and you'll know what district you're in. This election cycle, single-member districts two, four, and six are up for grabs, as well as the mayor. Single-member district six, because she was unopposed in the, in the end, Mary Coffey is already your councilperson.
All right, well, John, thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Back to you guys, I'm Joe Hyde, San Angelo Live.